Time is 6:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, I need a roll call for the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Roll call, please.
Boardmember Hughes.
Here.
Boardmember Cordis.
Here.
Boardmember Larson.
Here.
Boardmember Wall.
Here.
Boardmember Hawkins.
Here.
Boardmember Anderson.
Here.
And Boardmember Walter.
Here.
Chair Walter, excuse me.
All right, we have a quorum. We're going to begin with Item 4A. This is new business of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. Item A specifically is a discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, December 16th, 2019 special meeting minutes. Okay, at this time, opening. Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, I believe the chair. I believe we're on Item 4A with respect to the Community Facilities District meeting minutes. Have you had an opportunity to review those meeting minutes?
Yes, we have.
So it's appropriate for a motion if, in fact, you have.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. I need a motion to dismiss.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
We don't need the motion to adjourn at this point.
But we need to go into Community Facility District Number Two.
They need to be open at the same time because the discussion we're going to have on executive session has to do with both districts. So all you need to do is open the second one and do a roll call. We'll be fine.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Need a motion to open Community Facilities District Number One.
Number two.
Number two.
I make a motion to open District Two.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. May we please have a roll call for Community Facilities District Number Two at this time?
Boardmember Hughes.
Here.
Boardmember Cordis.
Here.
Boardmember Larson.
Here.
Boardmember Wall.
Here.
Boardmember Hawkins.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
And Chair Walter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This is what happens when time flies by five minutes. At this time, we do need an adjournment to the joint executive session between the Town of Florence and Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two for the purposes of discussion or consultations with designated representatives of the public body and/or legal counsel pursuant to ARS Sections 38, 431, dot O3, A3, and A4 to consider its position and instruct its representatives and/or attorneys regarding a notice of claim filed by Merrill Ranch Owners Agent LLC, CMR Casa Grande LLC, Roadrunner Resorts LLC, and Florence Copper Incorporated against Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and Number Two and the Town of Florence.
Madam Mayor, we actually need three separate motions now and votes so that we can adjourn to executive session.
Okay, the first one is Motion A, which is the motion of the Florence Town Council.
I motion of the ... what? Read it just like it says?
So make a motion of the Florence Town Council to adjourn to the joint executive session.
I motion for the Florence Town Council to adjourn to executive session.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That motion carries. Motion B is motion of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
I'll make a motion of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And C is motion of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
I make a motion of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we are going to adjourn to an executive session, but we will come back.
She's holding everything up.
What?
You're holding everything up.
Need a motion?
Make a motion for the Town of Florence to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One to adjourn from executive session.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Make a motion for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight. Need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item nine is new business of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. Item A is a public hearing on feasibility report for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Two, Assessment Area Eight, Unit Thirty-Two, Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, District Chair and Board. It's nice to see you tonight. Tonight, we're asking for two things. First, to hold a public hearing on a feasibility report for CFD Number Two, Area Eight, Unit Thirty-Two. And secondly, to adopt a resolution which approves the feasibility report, eight amendments and waivers, and authorizes the sale and issuance of bonds in the amount of $280,000. Just a little bit of history on Area Eight, Unit Thirty-Two. It's 24.25 acres, and I put the location for you. It's skipping around here, located off Spirit Loop, west and north, and then east along Walker Butte Wash, and then south, starting along West Merryweather Way and intersecting on Walker Butte Wash. It's composed of eighty individual lots which have been platted. The total cost of improvements is $679,000, and the estimated completion date is March 1st of 2020. The assessment is $3,500 per unit, as with all the other assessments in CFD Number One and Two. The developer has contributed an estimated $30,000 in cost of issuance. The issue is estimated to be at 6% of interest. We won't know until final closing what the actual interest is with the amortization schedule provided. And then the term of financing is for 25 years. The total payment is approximately $307 a year. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over for the public hearing.
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public at this time that has any questions, comments, or Is there any member of our council that has any questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead and close that public hearing. Moving on to Item B. This is the discussion and possible action on Resolution Number MR-CFD Two, Two Forty Twenty, to approve the feasibility report and for the execution and delivery of special assessment installment purchase agreement, Assessment Area Eight, and related matters in the amount not to exceed $280,000 for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Assessment Area Eight, Unit Thirty-Two, as presented by Ms. Rebecca Jimenez. Is there anybody from the public or council that has any questions, comments, concerns on this matter? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution Number MR-CFD Two, Two Four Zero Dash Twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, December 16th, 2019 special meeting minutes. If there's no questions, comments, concerns, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, December 16th, 2019 special meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. At this time, please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open up our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are posted properly for discussion and legal matter. Is there anybody who has any discussion? Closing call to the public. Next item this evening is item number fourteen. This is our presentations. Item A is our Florence Transportation Study presentation by Christopher Salas.
Tonight, our consultant will be actually doing the presentation, but I wanted to give a brief introduction and a few thank yous that are in order. Number one, the PAR grant, which is Planning Assistance for Rural Areas, is a grant that is developed and administered by ADOT. Approximately two years ago, we reached out to Mr. Jason Botson with ADOT on this particular application. We were watching it for a while to make sure when it was open, but we were also doing some background on previous winning proposals to make sure, because this is a competitive grant. And so I want to first start off by thanking Jason from ADOT for all of his assistance because without his help, I don't think that Florence would have been able to win this particular grant. So that was very much thank you. He helped me and Suzie, actually, like I said, a big portion of it. And I think we got it in early, and he was able to kind of critique it and kind of come up with anything that might need to be bolstered. As I said previously, this was a planning study, and so there are a lot of important elements. But I wanted to give kind of a brief example of what staff needs this study for. There are a lot of elements. So some of the elements may be the actual transportation modeling. So you'll see stuff in there like projected traffic volumes in the future. There will be levels of service projected in the future. There will be areas where there will be deficiencies projected out in 2014, and those deficiencies are what feed into the town's capital improvement plan, the CIP. Those deficiencies get fed into future development impact fee studies. There will be deficiencies in the network maybe for bicycle facilities or pedestrian facilities. But ultimately, this document helps us, assists us, when development comes in and says, "We are going to be building a subdivision," or maybe, let's just say, "a power center." So a power center is going to come in, and they want to build it along Hunt Highway. What type of infrastructure will be needed to support this? Well, we need to be able to give the development community some projections on traffic volumes. So let's just say 26,000 cars. You know, what does that mean? Does that mean six-through lanes? Does that mean 140 feet of rideaway? Does it mean 162 feet of rideaway? Are we going to be able to get three full access points within our quarter mile of frontage? And so there'll be access management guidelines that are identified in there. There will be lane whiffs. There will be, again, the access manager will be able to determine how many full access points that will be given in that area there. There'll be criteria for if a traffic signal warrant is needed, right turn lanes needed. So this document helps staff right-size improvement plans for future development, including preserving the most needed thing is probably our rideaway corridors. Because right now, a lot of our roads can function just fine with only two lanes, but in areas along, like, in particular, like Hunt Highway, that will need to be wind through four and six lanes in the future. And so obviously, when Pulte builds out, at the time, those were requirements for Merrill Ranch Parkway to be four lanes, for Felix to be built as a, again, a five-lane in the future facility, highway, a six-through lane facility in the future. So this document kind of touches almost everything we do in public works, from a long-range planning study, and assists to make sure that, again, we get the proper infrastructure installed by development, helps us, again, with our CIP, because not all the projects will be development projects. Some of these projects will be partly funded by HERF, could be partly funded by, again, development impact fees, and helps us identify when those improvements will be needed, as part as short-term, midterm, and long-term projects. So I ask that everyone take some time to kind of glance through the ... it's a relatively large document. I think it's 121 pages in the PDF. This is a draft, so we still have the ability to capture any comments, whether they be missing elements or just things that need to be expanded on. My review is almost complete. There are a few things that need to be discussed between the consultant and staff still. We are also going to be including some input. It also identifies in particular cost of improvements. The way that the study was done, it just says "per mile" instead of "per lane mile," which is a more regular nomenclature. So that's some of the things that we need to work on. But that's a good example of when council's looking at and thinking about having certain roads wind, we can look back at this document and then say, "This is going to be six or seven million dollars to install this road along this corridor if we want to develop, for example, economic development." So with that, I'd like to introduce Kevin Kugler with Michael Baker to go over tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be back before you this evening, and appreciate the introduction from Chris. And we're here on January 21st, and we're, as Chris said, we're getting closer to the finish line in this process on a document that touches a lot of things that you do, both from a public policy standpoint and from a staff administration standpoint. May I start out by saying it's been wonderful to work with everyone on your staff. It's a true team effort of this project because there's a lot of inputs that go into that and a lot of coordination. So Brent and Chris, Brian and Ben on down, it's been a real pleasure to work with your staff, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be with you in Florence again. So as Chris suggested, this project, as you know, has been going on for some time. And in terms of the process, just to refresh your recollection where we're at, we're getting near the end and presenting a briefing to you tonight. We just finished Task Ten just before with the public meeting, and we appreciate those who had an opportunity to stop by and say hello and look at our presentation boards and get some inputs, or receive some input, I should say, from you all and others. We had a pretty good turnout this evening for members of your community. As we are getting closer to, we've done the technical papers that lead up to this draft final report, and that's why we are here to brief you on tonight. And from here, we're going to be presenting or finishing a public involvement summary and finishing up the final report, and I'll touch on a couple of final next steps at the end here. For those, as a reminder, and those who are new to the process, just early on in the process, as Chris had said, we've met with staff extensively, of course, and we had a technical advisory committee, and with and through those discussions and anecdotal input from the public, these were some of the top transportation needs and issues that were identified that kind of set our compass, if you will, for this project moving forward at the onset of the process. And it was to look at improving east-west connectivity throughout town, and that's roadway connectivity predominantly. It was to look at the functional, the roadway functional classifications, and I'll touch on those in just a moment. They needed a refreshing from what you had, and this is an update, by the way, to the 2008 Florence Coolidge Regional Transportation effort that was done in a pre-recession environment, if you will. We had some safety considerations that were at intersection locations. I'll touch on briefly. Chris also touched on the bike and ped mobility, in particularly looking at the connectivity or enhancing the future connection between Merrill Ranch, the Five Parks area in downtown and surrounding areas. And the technical advisory committee and staff also wanted to take the opportunity for this document to contemplate some enhanced policies relative to site visibility triangles at corners. So there's safety in intersection, making sure there's not obstructions blocking a driver's view as they pull up to an intersection. We also looked at bus bays, identifying truck routes, and policies on enhancing connectivity between existing and proposed subdivisions or master plan communities. So what we did as part of a comprehensive town-wide transportation master plan of sorts, we, of course, looked at future growth and vehicle trip projections. And the planning horizon on this document is a 20-year document up to 2040. So we evaluated existing average daily traffic and a roadway level of service, as Chris touched on in his opening remarks. And the existing transportation plan reflects surplus capacity, kind of in a pre-recession condition, if you will. And Chris used a great word about right sizing, right sizing the document, or at least some of, not the document, excuse me, some of the roadway facilities. And that's not unique to just Florence. There's many communities throughout the state that they're doing 10-year updates to their plans, a lot of them done in a pre-recession environment, with very ambitious growth rates. And we all know that, how the recession impacted us, and the growth rates are a little bit something different now than they were then. And so with and through different growth rates become new projections on travel demand for traffic. And so the right sizing of your roadways is definitely happening with this document. We looked at, we worked collaboratively with the Maricopa Association of Governments, as they are the gatekeepers, as I like to say, on the travel demand model that Florence is a part of that process. So we looked at regional models for traffic demand. There was a couple glitches in their process that we helped sort out through this process, which led to a couple delays, but it presents and provides you with better, more accurate information. We looked at the level of service of the traffic, which is a ratio of traffic volume on the roadway versus the capacity of the roadway, and then we applied those through growth projections, which on average were growth rates for roadways was at about a 4% average growth rate level, which is, as you probably know, a little bit higher than the general population growth rate. But traffic trips tend to be out ahead a little bit of growth rates in terms of sheer numbers. It's fairly progressive, but it obviously helps us give confidence in our results to give you a quality product at the end of the day in making sure these roads are right-sized. So there's a lot of information in these next couple graphics. I'll spare you the details and glad to entertain any questions you have, of course. But this is a map in the document that looks at the existing daily traffic in the community as it stands today, with the colored line segments providing different levels of vehicles per day, with the red and the orange and yellow lines, if you will, being heavier traffic trips of anywhere from 15,000 to 30,000 per day. And it won't be a surprise to you that some of those larger volumes of traffic are in the Santan area as we come down Hunt Highway towards Florence proper, which was, this was an evaluation both within the town municipal limits at about 60 square miles and the planning area as well, just if I was remiss for not pointing that out. We compared the existing level of traffic to, as I mentioned, a 2040 level of service. And what we mean by no build is to say, okay, if we were not to do any improvements to the roadways, and we have all this growth that's going to be coming in the next 20 years, what kind of level of service, as they say, would our roadways look like? And as you can see, just as in the glance of your eyeball at the map, the roadways that have, again, the orange and red line segments are Level C, Level of Service Es and Fs that are predominantly focused in the different segments of Hunt Highway, which is probably no surprise to anybody. But in 2040 projections, we can see that the Hunt Highway around just south of Merrill Ranch and Addaway Road continuing to the south and over on State Route 79, north of, kind of between the river and Five Parks are areas of concern there. So with and through the traffic modeling, comparing today and tomorrow, if you will, 2040, this is the right sizing we talked, Chris spoke of, in terms of developing a functional classification. That's a fancy transportation word for saying, just kind of defining the different types of roadways, if you will. So our classifications for moving forward for the Town of Florence that are recommended for you all include a principal arterial, which is a six-lane facility, a minor arterial, which is a four-lane facility, and a major and a minor collector roadway, and of course, local streets as well. And those are the different lines that represent the roadway types before you. As noted upfront, in terms of one of the key goals and objectives that the town wanted to see come out of this process was to identify a bona fide truck routing plan. That is to say, look at the existing and future network of roadways and identify areas where we think there will be a heavier emphasis or desire to segregate or focus trucks from the general purpose traffic. And as you can see on this map, they're highlighted in the yellow lines, fairly simplistic maps of the eye, pops out to the eye. You can see that the ADOT facilities, predominantly 87, 287, and 79, of course, as regional roadways are a natural truck route as they carry trucks regionally for commerce, of course. Hunt Highway as well, and in terms of local surface streets, in addition to those, would be Addaway Road and Arizona Farms Road. This is a sample of a typical roadway cross-section that Chris also touched on in terms of really having a clear understanding, both as the policy body, staff to administer, any developer or landowner coming in for entitlements or improvement drawings for subdivisions. This document will set the expectations as to what the confines of the roadway prism should look like. So what we have here is what I like to think is a nice graphic that easily articulates what the dimensions are of the different facilities, and really want to underscore the fact that, unlike your current plan, this plan places a larger emphasis on a complete street where it's providing or accommodating all levels of mobility, the vehicle, the pedestrian, and the bicyclist on all levels of roadways. And you'll see at the bottom of the graphic, it clearly identifies for anyone to look at what the design features would be in terms of the rideaway, what the typical daily traffic should be, the design speed and the posted speed, and a typical cost per mile on average, again, at a high-level planning cost estimate. So with respect to recommended roadway improvements, kind of going back to Chris's word on the right sizing, as we go through the travel demand modeling, there is an opportunity, of course, to look at different roadway segments that, as we project out the 2040 traffic volumes, there is an opportunity to look at areas that will be capacity constrained. volumes, there is an opportunity to look at areas that will be capacity constrained. That is to say that the roadways as planned will not be able to handle the future volume. So we have 12 different roadway segments here that are identified for capacity expansion. And they're identified with implementation phases, short, medium, or long-term, and preliminary cost estimates for those roadway segments as well. It would be important to identify that as for these 12 different roadway segments for capacity expansion, that six of them, half of them, are located in the Florence planning area currently in the Penale County jurisdiction. So you'll see there under some of those that are near the top of the graphic, the first six projects, you'll see there how there's coordination with Penale County in the short-term and considerations for medium and long-term improvements as well. The other six are more within Florence proper. And I could go through these one at a time, but I think you get the gist of it there. You'll see that four of them, five of them, I should say, are related to different segments along Hunt Highway, basically going from north to south incrementally, improving those segments to handle those capacities. And I should also point out that, not shown on the graphic before you, kind of back to the right sizing terminology, we also have 12 different roadways that we're recommending in the document for reducing in size of the roadway, based on the fact that your existing document, again, was done in a pre-recession environment with the larger growth rates. Well, as we calibrated the model with newer and improved growth rates, there was an opportunity to reduce some of the roadway sizes, which in turn is going to save yourselves and others precious dollars for not having to build roadways that would have unnecessary or surplus capacity. So it's a nice balance there to, back to Chris's point on the right sizing of the facilities. Safety is a word that I haven't strangely enough used quite yet, but it's a very important underpinning of the entire document. So just as we looked at roadway capacities, whether too large or too small, we of course looked at the safety that predominantly revolves around intersections. We used five years' worth of historical crash data to do an extensive analysis on all different crash types and, of course, took input from your staff, the first responders, anecdotal evidence from the public and so forth, to come up with this list of intersections. As I spoke to some of you and members of your community at our open house meeting just moments ago, that they were glad to see some of these intersections being identified and they should come as no surprise to you. And you'll see these are identified in terms of the types of recommendation, the implementation phase, and some preliminary costs. And some of these are initial low-hanging fruit types of recommendations that can be done to improve the safety of the intersection before that particular roadway or intersection reaches an ultimate build-out condition, which will be ultimately redesigned altogether. As Chris pointed out, we have existing and planned bicycle facilities and pedestrian facilities as well. I know this map looks like a big bowl of spaghetti, and we talked about this a little bit before, but this is identifying all planned multi-use paths, trails, and bicycle facilities that are on roadways and off- roadway facilities. So you'll see we take advantage, of course, of the planned roadway network, and this also pivots off the active transportation plan that we collaborated with Brian Hughes in the initial development of that. And this also leverages the opportunity for an off-street network, as I said, to leverage some of your larger natural wash systems that are south of the downtown that you'll see kind of crisscross on the map there below or south of the downtown, but also utilize potential other trail systems along the Gila River, of course, to regional open spaces. And hopefully someday the rail rights aways and alignments for trail connectivity as well. And I forgot, I left out the CAP canal, I apologize. Other recommendations, as I mentioned, beyond roadways and bike and pedestrian issues that are the traditional focus of documents, we also, as I mentioned, came up with a site visibility triangle that the graphic below you or in front of you demonstrates, kind of a 33 by 33-foot triangle at the intersection of two streets where we try to keep things that are two foot and above to be out of that triangle for site visibility and safety purposes. So we have some policies there that staff can leverage as a policy document to administer moving forward. And we recommend some changes to your development code and subdivision code as well for a couple of these things. We have bus bay specifications that reflect for both your town of Florence's surface street roadways and for ADOT facilities as well. We have adaptive streets as a term to basically talk about low-investment aesthetic and traffic operational improvements to roadways in and around your downtown area that may have larger-than-normal rights aways where there's opportunities to either narrow the street, enhance things with low investments, low-cost investments, I should say. And they can also serve as aesthetic improvements as well for the community. And as I mentioned, we came up with a list of policies to connect existing and planned communities or subdivision developments. So Mayor and Council, next steps of the process, as I mentioned, just a moment between 4:00 and 6:00 PM this evening in your foyer out here, we held our public open house meeting. We had some real good input from some folks that were nice enough to stop by and give us some input. And as Chris mentioned, this is a draft final document, so we still have time. I know Chris and Brent and others have been looking at the document and giving us their chicken scratches here in the next little bit, and we certainly offer you, Mayor, and Council, the opportunity to do the same. We'd like to receive any, if you have the opportunity to visit the website, the document is there. I know Brent, I think, mentioned that he sent that to you, so you should have that as well at your disposal. So if you do have the time to peruse the document and have any comments or suggestions, we would certainly welcome those and ask that you pass those along to either Chris or Brent two weeks from today, if I may, Mayor, if that's appropriate, which is, I believe, February 4th, if I added up my dates properly. And then from there, we'll take any changes that we have from staff and you all, prepare the final report, and we're glad to come back and do a work session with you all. If you would, Mayor, if you would like, or so inclined to do that, we're glad to do that. And then the reports for any members of the public, it's available on the ADOT website. I know that's a little lengthy, but if you Google kind of ADOT MPD and transportation, Florence Transportation Plan, you will find the study. And with that, Mayor, I'm available for any questions that you may have, and thank you again for the time.
Thank you for coming out prior to the meeting as well as for the presentation at this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, my pleasure.
Council members, are there any questions? Councilmember Hughes.
Brent, will, can we put this website on our, on our, on our website so that the citizens can pull it up?
Yes, ma'am, Ben will do it tomorrow.
Any other questions?
Can we get this presentation electronically?
Absolutely.
Put it on a social media blast would be good.
Follow that link, we'll pop it up on our website, as well as put a link on our town website Facebook page. That way, more residents and citizens have the opportunity to view it, as well as communicate with them the date of February 4th in regards to any feedback.
Sounds great, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you again for coming out and for the presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate the partnership.
Likewise, thank you very much.
Our next presentation this evening is a presentation on fiscal year 2019, 2020. This is our second quarter financial report by Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is through December 31st of 2019. Again, we, this is general fund revenues makes up about, these items here make up about 80% of the town's revenue, city sales tax, food tax, property taxes, building permits, state shared revenues, and auto lieu tax. As you can see, our city sales tax, city food tax, and property tax are a little bit down. We are watching this city sales tax area right here. It is behind last year, and we have identified a major taxpayer that we need to continue to look at. Sometimes those delays, especially at the end of the year like this, our revenues for the second quarter or basically the fourth quarter of the year will not come in until January or a little bit later. The property taxes, we had a taxpayer that had a revision to their classification of taxes, which means that the town had to pay back what the county had to pay back to the taxpayer. So it's been slightly reduced by about $30,000. So I'm not going to probably hit my total amount of property tax for this year in the general fund, it'll be down a little bit. So, you know, these things come up, we weren't notified until it actually happened, so we just have to deal with these kinds of things. You can see through our building permits how strong we are, and this is all related to growth. You have to be careful about these kinds of revenues, they're one-time revenues, so we cannot count on them every year. Right now, we have a good steady stream of building permits, but next year or the year after that, it may fall off. So we always want to budget conservatively whenever you're considering these revenues. Sales tax, income tax, and auto lieu tax are, of course, above what we had last year because we had a slight increase. Total general fund expenditures, though, are down from the prior year, and I can mainly identify that through our legal fees that we have. That has not been as much as last year, but that doesn't mean that will change in this next few months. Other major revenue funds are your general capital fund, which is where all your capital for general government are paid out of. They're up compared to last year because we're doing a lot of projects. Herf, water, sewer, pardon me, herf and water are up because we're doing a lot of projects there. Sewer is holding its own, it's very close to what we've done last year. The sanitation fund also, their expenditures are up. The expenditures in general capital fund, I'm sorry, I think I did this last time, too. The last slide was revenues, this is expenditures. Our expenditures for general capital fund are up for the projects we're completing in herf fund, they're a bit down, holding its own, maybe projects aren't rolling out as fast as they did last year. Water fund, we have a lot of projects in the water fund that are going through, sewers down a bit, but I think it'll probably catch up here. And sanitation fund is also up. Cash in the bank, we have in our general checking about $20 million, and the interest is about 0.5%, which is very, very low. Cash in bank and credit cards about $37,700. We have a small LGIP account, the interest rate's at about 1.5%. Our PFM investments are $40.05, the interest rate has dropped a little bit from the prior reporting. And our police evidence fund, that's an in-and-out account. So our total cash in bank is about $61 million, very healthy. Just some department activities, we completed our annual audit and comprehensive financial report for the town, the community facilities, districts, and the court. On October 1st, we sent out the first phase of the budget with capital projects, and they've already come back in, and that's being compiled as we speak. We implemented our electronic payroll timekeeping system, and then we're addressing leave time submission and approvals right now, we're working on those. We sent out the second phase of the budget, the operational budget, on December 6th, and we're having onsite training for this particular module of the budget in late February. I think that's what we have right now. We were gearing up toward early February, but we had to postpone it off until later in the month. Our departmental training with accountants and various staff members are continuing. We have, are doing a lot of upgrading on the process within the finance department. Our sanitation and analysis is completed and a report has been written and probably will be presented in the next meeting or two. The water and wastewater rate increase are proposed to Council. Now, do you have any questions?
Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes, I'm wondering, the governor's decision to close the prison here, how's that going to affect our new budget? Are we going to have to start over or are we going to, I mean?
Well, of course, we always want to prepare for the future.
Well, yeah.
And most definitely, it's going to affect our budget.
Well, yeah, but I mean...
One of the most important areas is in our sewer fund because ADOC has a, we provide sewer services to ADOC and its significant amount of money. So that will have to be adjusted, and it could result in having our rate reviewed again in that area because everything is geared toward a certain amount of revenue whenever you do a utility rate study. So once that drops off, everything shifts back around. It also could mean projects shift around to, are postponed or are exactly eliminated. So as far as state shared revenue, that is definitely depending on the number of inmates that are shipped out, that goes toward our census count, and that, Ben has done a good job in estimating that amount, I think it was 1.5, Ben? 1.3, yes, on state shared revenues. And that's just a very rough estimate. So when you have that kind of reduction in revenue, we have to reduce expenditures. So we all need to be looking toward what we can do to either compensate for the revenue being lost or reduce expenditures. And that will, it may not take place in this next fiscal year, but probably within the next, the year after, they'll probably start doing a phase out. So that means we have to start adjusting. It's not a fun thing to do, but it's a fact of life and it's economics.
Now, if I can also, at this point, this past Friday, Mr. Ben Bitter, our town manager, Mr. Billingsley, and myself had a meeting with the two wardens, with the director, and other individuals there. There are some opportunities that we discussed in regards to partnering that will leave us in a similar, if not better, position if we continue this open communication and working together. I'm going to have Mr. Billingsley speak a little bit, as well as we will provide Council with a full detail of our conversation.
Yes, thank you, Becky, thank you, Mayor, all good points. The one thing that Becky mentioned there that I think is absolutely critical is it's important that at this point, there's no panic. We understand the parameters, we understand the potential impacts, as Ben said, in terms of state shared revenues, it could be as high as $1.3 million based on loss of population. But there's also primary and secondary impacts. A primary would be those impacts that directly relate to that population loss and the state shared revenues. A secondary impact, as Becky pointed out, are impacts to our utility funds. There are others in terms of our franchise fee revenues. There are a number of things that goes into that. So if you consider primary and secondary impacts, the number is more like $2.5 million. I really appreciate the mayor's comment, and it's something I was going to say as part of my manager's report tonight. We were lucky enough to have the director and his staff here to have a very honest conversation with us last week. It lasted over two hours and many things were discussed. But from my perspective, the two most important things that were discussed is mitigation measures that can be put in place in terms of timing, what occurs with those inmates, and how phasing would occur with respect to that. And secondarily, opportunities, as the mayor put it, to partner in terms of enhancing value of facilities and potential future financial impact. And I can't thank the director enough for him coming down here and having that conversation. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our staff. I mean, we just, I made a talking point at last Monday's meeting, then immediately, because we just literally found out, we spent Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday last week with our hair on fire around this building, trying to realize what those primary and secondary impacts are, as well as coming up with methodologies by which to mitigate those impacts. Our staff did a phenomenal job, and special recognition to Mr. Bitter because he's really, really taken the lead on... really taken the lead on the media aspect of this, and as recent as today, was doing more interviews, I think with K-Gun from Tucson today, K-O-L-D in Tucson. Ben has really done a great job representing the town. I think that we also did a very nice job of providing documentation that fully enunciates the town of Florence's position, and backs that up with empirical data that we've been able to provide to our legislative delegation, to the director of prisons, and to some of the media outlets. So, for what it's worth, let's not overreact to the budget impacts. We've got a lot, there's a lot more water to tread between now and when those decisions will be made, and what budget will be approved. Keep in mind, it was a proposed budget by the governor. What will be approved, and what will be the impacts, but we're all in this together.
Hello, Sad.
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
A question for Becky.
Yes.
I think the last time we went through this, didn't we talk about moving some of the cash in the bank to the PFM investment fund?
Yes, we're still, we're talking, we had a meeting with another institution this last week, and we're kind of trying to look at our options as far as what to do with that. But we do need to move some money because it's accumulating fairly fast in there.
We need the interest.
Yes.
Thank you.
As long as that rate stays up, but it dropped down this last time, and I was really disappointed in that. Paul and I both are watching it very carefully, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation. Item number 15 is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. As part of the consent agenda, unless a council member, remember, the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval to enter into a contract with Cactus Transport Incorporated, doing business as Cactus asphalt to sweep, prepare, and apply fog seal, and rejuvenate existing roads in an amount not to exceed $66,455.96. The proposal was for $57,787.79 with a 15% contingency totaling $8,668.17. Item B, approval to enter into a professional services contract with best environmental subsurface sampling technology for zoning samples for a dynamic spinner log, USGA, tracer flow meter, and packet feasibility report in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Item C, approval to enter into a professional services agreement with Nino and Moore Geotechnical and Environmental Sciences Consultants for geotechnical services for on-call engineering services in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Item D is approval of an annual software renewal for the Microsoft Office 365 E3 Government in an amount not to exceed $26,595.25. Item E is approval of the December 2019 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item F is to review, la-la-la, receive and file the following board and commission minutes, 1st November 14th and December 12th, 2019 Arts and Culture Commission Minutes, and 2nd, October 30th, 2019 Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like any item removed at this time?
Yes, I'd like to have item B and C removed.
Okay, with that, we need a motion, removing items B and C.
I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve the consent agenda with removal of items B and C, as read.
A second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Vice Mayor?
Just a quick question on item B. You talked about this analysis will calculate the flow rate within the well. What does that mean, the flow rate within the well? Is that the water running under in the aquifer, or the water pumping out of the well? What is flow rate there?
It's the actual horizontal transmissivity. So, yes, the water that's flowing through the strata in each kind of like, think of it maybe a five-foot section or 10-foot section at a time. So, the whole point of the original testing was to determine which areas were producing the most water, and then in areas where we had certain chemistry problems. So, the town has had traditionally, within specifications and within allowances of ADEQ, we have been in compliance with our nitrate level, but at the borderline of that. So, approximately a year ago, we pulled well five, would no longer meet the requirement, so we shut that well down, and we had to go about a process determining how we would either rehabilitate that well, drill a new well, decommission that well, how we would serve the community in that area. We still need the booster pumps for well five to meet the flow requirements for proper fire flow and proper pressure within the area, but we don't necessarily need well five just for the strictly sense of production, but you do want some redundancy in your system.
I just would be very interested in the flow rate, because we've been quoted some flow rates are rather slow, to say the least, so that was my concern. Thank you. Now, for item C, I was wondering, why do we need a professional service contract with this geotechnical services? I mean, I read your description there, but you say staff will be involved in writing the specs and doing the request for statements. I would think our staff should be qualified to do all of this.
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure what, what area of the council action item you're referring to, but I think I can still answer the question. Staff does write the scope of work. So, Mayor had a inquiry from a resident within the last 30 days, 45 days, about what's going on on Hunt Highway. And so, staff provided a detailed response to that, and what phases we were doing that in. And we have been working with TerraCon to develop a scope of work for that entire corridor of Hunt Highway, so that in the next 20 years, 30 years, we'll be doing improvements of Hunt Highway in sections. And in order to budget that, we need to determine what that structural section will look like. It's, what Kevin was talking about earlier was functional classification, but there's a different component to building a roadway, it's a structural section. So, how much base material will be required, how much asphalt will be required. Hunt Highway is a hodgepodge of different sections in there. So, we are going to go ahead and do the entire corridor, and we'll need other projects like that to be done by a subsequent engineering firm. If we do a mill and overlay of Ataway, if we do additional projects, CIP projects, Florence Heights, for example. When we did, when we did Florence Heights, we did an overlay, we had a geotechnical company determine the structural section for that overlay. So, that's what they are doing. They are just a geotechnical investigation company that provides either testing for CIP projects. One of the things that's unique for Florence, for a small community, is we have segregated out our acceptance, acceptance testing. So, if you're huge like the city of Phoenix, ADOT, or Mesa, you have your own testing lab. You have professionals that know how to do, run a binder test, they know how to use a nuclear gauge. And then if you're in a smaller community, you rely on the contractor, believe it or not, to tell you if the materials they're using is good or not. And so, in a, in a mid-sized community, you may have a contracted service to have the acceptance agency be controlled by the agency, which is the town of Florence. We have chosen to have the acceptance agency as us. We have an outside engineering firm do all of our construction material testing. So, there is no bias. Nino and Moore or TerraCon is doing all of the testing for us on the First Street project, for example. That was done on Florence Heights, for example, that was done, there's been a bunch of them that we've done that way. So, again, when you have, it probably sounds really strange that a community would allow the contractor to tell you whether it's good or not. That is very normal in a small community, and we don't allow that.
Well, I just wondered if this is premature. Will we have to do this over again when we get ready to? I mean, we may not work on a highway for five, 10 years. So, we'd have to do this all over again, wouldn't we?
No, not at all. I mean, assuming the next public works director, town engineer respects the work that I did, we want to have documents that live past me, that live past our town manager. We want documents to hand on to the next people so that they have an understanding of what work has been done, and the manner it's been done, it's documented. The earth isn't going to change in 10 or 20 years.
Well, it may.
Okay.
It may. So, that's, that's my point. We don't know what's going to happen next week. Now, if we were going to start building this road within the next year or two, I would see us needing to do this, but...
And we are, sir, we have a project planned for next year of Hunt Highway north of Franklin Road, we have a future project. It's in our CIP.
And it's going to cost us $100,000 to go out there and do this for that section of road?
No, sir, this is just an engineering service. This allows us to have the ability to hire them if needed.
I just really think this is, you know, $100,000 that we could better spend, honestly.
There's no obligation to the spending, it's an on-call service. There's no obligation to spend one penny of any of our on-call engineers. Only projects that move forward are, money is attached, this is just the ability to do that.
Well, what are we authorizing $100,000 for, then?
To have a professional services agreement that will allow us to move forward without doing individual advertisement every time we need a professional service.
Do we have multiple bids on this one?
We have TerraCon under contract that we previously took to council four, five months ago, and now we have Nino and Moore, we have two of them.
So, we don't have a specific, three bids for this project?
There, there is no project.
Can I give it a shot?
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to do my best to try to answer the council members' questions directly, and hopefully it makes sense to the rest of the council as well. Number one, a question was asked, can't we do this ourselves, isn't something that we can do in-house? The answer is no. We do not have a geotechnical lab, we do not have licensed geotechnical engineers. This is, this is a very specific technical aspect of engineering, design, and construction in the civil world, so it would be contracted out. Number two, this is not specific to a project. This is so that we have a consultant when we have projects, that we can go to those consultants individually on each project and get a best price, because we're going to have a contract with these folks to do a number of projects. We understand what geotechnical testing costs, but it puts us in a position, when we have two of these folks, we can, we can do an individual statement of qualifications process and make sure that we get the best deal on each project, and be able to move quickly without going through individual bid, bid projects, or bid processes, or individual much smaller contracts. Say, we had this Hunt Highway project, we're going to do a lot better financially by having this on-call consultant, and then instead of going out, do an individual bid for $15,000 worth of work on one project, and we'll be able to move quickly. With these on-call contracts, we get a to-not-exceed authorization, and we take those individual POs, those individual authorizations for individual projects back to council, and we put that on the consent agenda. You guys see that all the time. Most recently, you saw two come across, I think at the last meeting or the meeting before, with EPS Group. They're an on-call consultant, same process is used, so that we can navigate very quickly. And it's something that, these are services that we do use all the time, and we respond with all the time. I hope some of that answers some of these questions. We have, our existing on-call contracts all expired, I want to say in August, Chris? September? So, all of our new on-calls, we have rebid, we received a number of proposals, they've been through a proposal review process. You have already approved CFD I on-call engineer, CFD II on-call engineer. We still have to do geotechnical survey, general engineering, and utility engineering. Those are all of our on-call engineering contracts.
This is the geotechnical.
Can we get a copy of all those on-call?
Can you get a copy of all those on-calls?
The two current ones we have, and the one you're proposing, the different ones that they were proposing to do?
We can certainly send you all of the existing contracts that have expired for on-call engineers, but you guys have approved all of them in the past.
I'm not saying that we won't approve, I just get confused about all these on-call contracts. And I don't want to see the contract, just, just give me a brief description about it.
Sure. We can give you a spreadsheet that has the contracts that were approved by council in the past that have expired, and then, of course, the new ones are on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. Then, I'll make a move that we approve item C. B and, well, B and C.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 16 is new business. The first item is item A. This is our first reading of ordinance number 68720, which is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, amending 3045 entitled "Action Taken by Ordinance." This is a first reading, ordinance only. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Billingsley.
Yes, ma'am. This particular item was brought forward by Ms. Garcia. Unfortunately, she could, could not be with us tonight, but it essentially discusses how we use ordinances, and in this case, more specifically, how we would handle rental of real property. And in this case, it was requested by council that those individual rental agreements take place as part of an ordinance and be published in the local paper. So, as I understand it, this defines when ordinances would be required for those types of transactions, and of course, this is just first reading, it will come back again, but when, when it come... What'd you say? Oh, you got it.
Mayor and council, I don't know if I had it, because I, but I know from speaking with Lisa previously, I think the idea on this proposed ordinance is, it looks like she deleted, or the proposal's delete the text that says lease. So, when there's a lease issue, for example, one of the spaces in the Silver King, it wouldn't be necessary to take it to an ordinance, which is typically, or required to be two different readings at the council. So, I think the idea is to add some efficiency here, and allow that to happen quicker and with less process.
As I understand, there's no financial impact to this, as well as property leases would not require an ordinance.
Ma'am, we just need to read the ordinance into the record.
Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 68720, which is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, amending 3045 entitled "Action Taken by Ordinance," whereas it has been brought to attention of the council, the town of Florence, Arizona, that the current method of handling ordinances requires modification and clarification. Now therefore, be it ordained that section 3045 of the code of the town of Florence shall read as follows. 3045, action taken by ordinance. In addition to other acts required by law or specific provision in the code of ordinances of the town of Florence, those acts of the town shall be, by ordinance, which A, adopt, amend, or repeal another ordinance or town code, or establish, alter, or abolish any town department, office, or agency. B, provide for a fine or penalty, or establish rules or regulations for violation of which a fine or other penalty is imposed. a fine or other penalty is imposed. C) levy any tax or assessment. D) sell, striking, or lease, real property, public property. Now therefore, be it further ordained by the mayor and council of the town of Florence, Arizona, that section 3045 of the town code, as set forth herein, shall continue in full force and effect until further action of the council, passed and adopted by the mayor and council of the town of Florence, Arizona, this third day of February 2020. Note, we are not taking action on this agenda item this evening. This is only the first reading at this time. Are there any council members that have questions regarding this agenda item? Okay. Item number B is discussion approval/disapproval of approving the notice of intention to increase water and wastewater rates per the 2018 rate study adopted, May 21, 2019. This is resolution number 1664-18, and scheduling a public hearing, February 21, 2020, to receive citizen comment. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Yes. Last year, we did our first rate increase for April 2019 based on the 2018 utility rate study in both water and wastewater. Our rates are due to increase on April 1, 2020. So, every year, you have to give a notice of intent to increase water and wastewater rates. I did a little financial impact that shows the additional revenue to the water fund is estimated at about $217,900. Wastewater fund, $270,300, and securing future water is estimated at an additional $3,350. This will give our statutory notification to increase the rates, and also, I did a rate increase impact on the page that shows, based on a 5,000-gallon water usage, the water and wastewater amount will go up to about $4.13 from the previous billing. On 15,000 gallons, about $8.99. And on a 2,200-gallon usage, about $10.95. So, it just set forth all the rates and the estimated amounts based on those usages. Of course, everyone's different based on what they use. But we do have to have these rate increases to support the expenditures that we have in each of the water and wastewater funds. And as I identified, there's three components to rates. That's operational, debt service, and capital outlay. So, anytime that you have these items, that's what your utility rate studies are based upon. And what we've tried to do is base these incrementally out, so you don't have any high peaks in rate increases, that they're kind of leveled out. And we do have a 10-year outlook on these rates, but as I indicated in this RCA, they should be studied every three to five years, depending on the changes that occur within the municipality, including annexations, if any, that include water and sewer, or any capital project, any capital project changes that we have. So, we're here tonight to ask that you adopt by motion a notice of intention to increase the water and sewer rates, and we will come back to you for approval on these.
Okay. Counsel, are there any questions? Vice Mayor?
Yes. Brent sort of scared me here with the prison closing. Do we need to factor that into these rates?
Councilmember Anderson, Vice Mayor Anderson, excellent question. My warning would to be not to fall into the hole of guessing or overreacting at this point. It is true that based on our empirical data and our analysis, if we were to lose the flow of that facility and under our existing contract, that would impact our sewer fund over $650,000 a year, which would be an incredibly high impact. It's between a fifth and a fourth of our total flow with the South Wastewater Treatment Plant. That said, when we did our actual rate study and the analysis associated with that, council adopted a five-year plan for update of rates based on that empirical data, including CIP, operations, maintenance, et cetera. If it came to fruition and we looked at losing over $650,000 in that wastewater fund, to Becky's point, we would need to go out and conduct, under state law, another rate study to be able to adjust our methodology, if that makes sense.
Well, I'm sure some cost is going to be reduced also if that takes effect, right?
It's hard to say. It's hard to say.
Well, the pumps, won't we be pumping much?
Well, on the wastewater side, we don't pump. It's a gravity-fed system, so our costs, it's hard to say that they would be reduced that much. I think that our settling time and our SBRs would be longer, but I don't know if we'd see much energy savings. Certainly, we wouldn't to that amount, over $650,000 a year. So, it's a real and present danger, I guess is the best way to put it, but as the mayor said, we've got some mitigation measures that we're working on that may turn Frown upside down, I guess that's the best way to put it.
Well, one other question for Becky, then. We talked about the rate increases. Have we seen increases in our expenses that would justify the rate increase?
Yes. Those are in your capital projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, I just want to make you aware that enterprise funds are considered business funds, and they should function solely upon their revenue versus expenditures. You don't want to get into any situation where these funds have to go unfunded and be borrowing money from another fund. The most prevalent one is the general fund. We cannot afford to have any monies going out of the general fund to supplement the enterprise fund. So, we have always made it a policy, internal policy with the town, that these funds are self-supporting. They have enough revenue to cover their expenditures.
I just don't want our citizens to think that we just automatically increase the funds every year just because we said we were going to.
No, we, and I'm sure that when they did this utility rate study, that they projected out what their expenditures were going to be based upon current situations. That's why it takes a long time for a rate study to be done, because it's very technical, and they try to encompass everything that they possibly can without going overboard to support the rates that they project out.
Thank you.
I think it's important, anytime we can provide synergy, Becky, to answer these questions, but Becky gave her quarterly report a little while ago. Our water revenue funds and our collections were on par. Our wastewater collections were significantly under par, and that's with the rates as they stand today. So, I mean, just our own quarterly empirical data shows that we need to increase our utility fees.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other questions or comments at this time. We need a motion.
Make a motion to publish a notice of intention to increase water and wastewater rates and fees as adopted by town council, and set a public hearing for February 21, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Item C, discussion approval/disapproval for a professional services agreement with Westland Resources, Sunrise Engineering, and Hazen and Sawyer for on-call utility services in an amount not to exceed $350,000 for each.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Unfortunately, some of what I'm going to say is going to be a little bit repetitive that was discussed in Ninewamore, but now that I have an opportunity to do a full presentation, I want to make sure that we kind of answer these questions and cover our on-call process, what's happened historically, and that will also cover some of the same things that will be discussed in item D essentially as well. So, originally, in late 2016, the town of Florence put out an advertisement for on-call services for general on-call engineering, which would be kind of typical of maybe a roadway, a drainage problem, a drainage study. You could argue that survey could fit in that, and we did. We included that in our services. And then, we specifically broke out a utility on-call. We received several boxes of proposals, and those were ranked accordingly, and council approved three contracts for general on-call for $500,000 each, and then, three contracts for the utility on-calls of $350,000 each. Previously, we had one contractor, consultant firm, and Westland Resources actually exceed the $350,000, and as you may remember, approximately a year ago, we brought Westland back up for a contract modification because we were doing additional work with them, and we had actually ran out of the ability to use them anymore. They were very successful in obtaining work, and I'm going to cover how they obtained work under the on-call in just a second. Hazen and Sawyer was also successful in having several projects awarded to them. One of the awardees was a firm that had previously done a lot of work with Florence and was not able to negotiate the new system. They just really weren't interested in turning in proposals. We made a conscious decision to keep them onboard and to hopefully use them for a lot of their historic knowledge, and that a relationship apparently didn't work out. It wasn't, I guess, deemed mutually beneficial from their side. In fact, they did not propose this time. So, again, trying to be transparent and understand how we've started off and where we're at today. Each on-call contract is for a blanket amount that would be essentially paid out of the projects. It's budgeted into the project. Every project has a capital investment of something you're going to physically see at one point, a physical improvement, and then typically, depending on that, we may budget 8% for a roadway project. We may budget 20% of a project cost for a plant modification. So, each one kind of has a different cost to it, but we include those costs in the CIP that are eventually approved and entered into our budgets every year. So, for each project, staff works with both the operations side and the engineering department to determine the projects. Once a project is determined, essentially, a scope is created by the engineering department, sent out to each of the on-calls. Under state law, we do have an ability to do a direct source for professional services. The town doesn't use that very frequently, and uses it very sparingly on very small items. So, we have, we've used that for something along the lines of what, both 220 and 230. We've used it for Cocopelli, where we've had like a mold investigation and asbestos type of survey, something small like that. Where doing a separate solicitation would cost us way more in time and staff and delays, especially on Cocopelli, than it would ever be warranted to save money, if you could save money. Needs to be made clear that state law in Arizona at least, not in other states, not in all states, but state law in Arizona does not allow us to have a one-step process where we can choose an engineering firm, a consulting firm, a, something that is designated as a professional service by costs alone, or include costs as part of it in a one-step process. That is not, that is not legal. So, we send out the scope of service to each of the on-calls, and they are given a five-page proposal limit, three pages of that scope. They further define what they're going to do. So, we give them a problem. They tell us how they're going to solve that problem in three pages. One of the pages is schedule, because sometimes schedule can be very important. Sometimes, it's not as important. And then, lastly, we do include a cost proposal. That cost proposal serves two purposes. One, since it's a broken-down cost proposal, we can really evaluate if a firm understands the depth of the project based on how much they're allocating in public outreach, survey, traffic control, whatever discipline it is that they needed to include in there, it does provide us the ability to understand if they understand the project. So, a great example of that would be is if we were doing a project maybe on, building a road in state land. State land is probably going to be a year and a half to two-year process, very easily to obtain right-of-way to build this road, this make-believe road, if you will. So, if someone puts in there, oh, $2,000 to work with state land on that, we clearly understand that they don't understand the level of involvement in doing this, and they would essentially be graded that way because they don't, they don't understand that. They're not rewarded for underbidding that. They're essentially dinged for not understanding this project. So, all of those proposals are ranked. Those results are passed on to the town's procurement officer, which has been our finance director in the past. I provide a scoring matrix of how each and every firm was scored, and ultimately, the chosen consultant. At that point, the people on that email, there's several people on that email, have any kind of, I guess, ability to question or scrutinize the decision process. But by having a two-step process, this does allow, as Mr. Billingsley was saying, the opportunity for us to save money twofold. Some projects are very simple in nature, and it's really hard to justify spending 20 or $30,000 more for a certain firm when the project is simple. And that does happen. It happens all the time, and it's been happening for a very long time. So, we have the ability to directly choose, essentially, assuming that the two proposals are very equal, we can choose essentially the one thing that we can control, which is cost. The other part to this is that everyone understanding the process keeps their pencils sharp. Everyone is very aware of what is occurring, and while, I won't use any names, but national firms or international firms that have huge marketing departments, they carry a lot of overhead. And in theory, somehow, some way, that budget has to pay for those employees who are not billable. The term in the industry is billable. So, that person somehow gets paid for by the company. In a larger firm, we'll have more unbillable employees, but will somehow show up in either billable rates or scopes of work. Somewhere, it shows up. No matter how sophisticated you are, you are paying for employees who essentially don't do technical work. So, by having this two-step process that has been vetted, this has been going on for 15-plus years, and now other communities have choin' in on what Florence slash what Maricopa was doing, other communities have done it as well. And while there may be some complaints, this has gone up to the state board and has been proven to be legal, has been challenged, and there's nothing that we are doing wrong, but this does, it's not purposely to circumvent the state law. It's a two-step process that allows us to evaluate cost proposals. So, in no way is there any encumbrance caused by these on-call contracts. What they essentially do is it does allow us to not spend so much time through a procurement department of doing a, an RSOQ, Statement of Qualifications, for every time we do any engineering projects. It saves us time for having to go back and get approvals for that, but it also protects us on some level of the inability to negotiate fees sometimes. I mean, that is always an option. If we don't come to, if we did an RSOQ and we could not negotiate an acceptable fee to a community, the state law does allow us to go to the next, the next most qualified, but you're not guaranteed of a lower price because you move down the list, and you don't really have much of anything, again, to control costs. This does allow us, again, to make sure that they understand there are additional people who are bidding on these things. It goes without saying that they understand that this is a competitive process and that cost is evaluated in it. And because of, again, it's a documented process that goes to the finance department, there is someone, there are multiple people above me. There is a clerk that sees it. There's a town manager that sees it. There is the, like I said, the finance director that sees it. There are several people. is the, like I said, the finance director that sees it. There are several people. Generally speaking, our town attorney has copied on these exact same emails to make sure that at least four additional people are looking at and determining that my evaluation and the engineering department's evaluation of an on-call is correct.
I feel that you've gone into depth of explaining this.
I apologize.
No, that is, that is okay. We appreciate the thoroughness. I just want to stop and pause and say, council, do you have any questions? Because I know that we've had this communication and this type of dialogue before. I understand that some other questions came out earlier today, which is why you're probably going back into depth right now, which we appreciate. But I just wanted to pause it to say, are there specific questions? I can't hear you. Okay, Councilmember Hughes.
How long will this, this money be used for? I know you don't have a crystal ball, but in the past, how long, when we've, like for $350,000, how long of an on-call service would that provide?
How long will it last?
It could, you're correct. It will vary greatly depending on how successful a bidder is. We're not going to penalize someone for being successful. There is always the idea of trying to make sure that everyone gets some work, but that level of, I guess, gratitude only gets so far with me. I'm going to reward the people who do the best job in their proposals. The length of time, I believe, was three years with the ability of two one-year extensions. I apologize. I thought it was.
Any other questions by council? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Westland Resources, Sunrise Engineering, and Hazen and Sawyer for on-call utility services, each in amount not to exceed $350,000.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Our next item is item D. This is discussion approval disapproval for a professional services agreement with Sunrise Engineering and EPS Group for land surveying in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for each. Mr. Chris Salas.
I will avoid the redundancy of earlier. I will only add this is that I made a statement earlier that said we could have included survey as part of a general. We chose to separate it out this time to encourage other firms that might have more specialized survey services that would not necessarily be rewarded. And we didn't want six or seven people on the general on-call as well. So the whole purposes of this was to kind of create, again, the ability maybe for some smaller firms. It didn't, it didn't work out that way, but that was the goal. Both EPS and Sunrise are not what we would say are, are small mom and pop shops, but they were the most qualified and ranked consistently by all staff, all staff members as one and two.
Any questions by council?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
This is sort of a technical question, but you show in the attachments that the contract for Sunrise and EPS were attached, but we only have one contract. I assume that both are the same?
Yes, sir. Both are the same.
Okay, thank you.
There's no further questions. We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Sunrise Engineering and EPS Group for land surveying, each in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Managers report.
Madam Mayor, I think I said my piece earlier.
Thank you. Call to the public. This is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody who has anything that they would like to say? Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Larson.
Okay, so I just wanted to first start off with, I had the pleasure of going to Third Friday this last week and it was fantastic. It was so great to see everybody on Main Street and seeing all the people driving up and down the road and partaking in all the festivities as well as getting some shopping done. So that was fantastic. I also would remind people that there is Powwow coming up as well as Make a Difference Day on the 25th, which I believe is Saturday. Powwow, I'd say Make a Difference Day starts at 8 o'clock down at the library community center and right in the parking lot there at 9 o'clock is Powwow. So it's just a great opportunity to be engaged in the community and also get some fresh produce and help out. So if anyone's looking for volunteer efforts, there's an opportunity there as well. So that is about it and I hope you guys have a great rest of the week.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Well, no, I was just going to mention the Powwow, but the, yeah, no, I have nothing other than there was a good turnout for the Third Friday down on Main Street. Want to thank everybody that came out. But I think as word spreads, I think it'll become a nice monthly event for town. That's all I have.
Excellent. Councilmember Cordas.
I did not attend Third Fridays. I attended basketball at the high school instead. Yeah, I don't really have anything right now. Last week, we had a good work session with H-Doc and brought in Kimber Lanning to talk to us about the importance of our main street and the importance of revitalizing our old buildings and investing in our history and that that will increase our economic growth if we make that commitment to that. So it was a good meeting and I look forward to hopefully seeing some progress with that. That's it.
Councilmember Wall.
Since I was out of town, actually out of the country all last week, I missed a lot of the fun that everybody else had. So I don't have anything to add.
Councilmember Hughes.
Today, we had a meeting at the, for an economic, for Pinell Partnerships Economic Development Committee. It was at the county building, great attendance. All the, all the towns in Pinell County were there. And it's going to be a very exciting collaboration. And John, Vice, Vice, Vice Mayor Anderson and myself went. And I was encouraged. So I also want to say that I am finally starting to feel a little bit better. I apologize publicly that I have been under the weather with this, with this valley fever. I don't do hardly anything, but I feel like I'm on the mend. So you'll start seeing me out and about again. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Well, just to complement what Councilmember Hughes talked about, the, I also attended the county Pinell Partnership meeting today. And it was quite amazing to hear all the projects that all our neighboring towns in Pinell County have done. It was especially interesting to hear what Eloy and Coolidge are doing in their downtown areas. I think we can learn something there. I also attended the Third Friday. If you haven't done that, it's, it's, it's just fun. That's all you can say. It's a lot of fun. And I would like to just to express a personal thanks to our fire department. When I was out in my front yard yesterday afternoon, two of my neighborhood boys who were on their little scooters come down and it says, hey, John, there's a big rattlesnake up behind the mailbox. I said, well, okay. They said, come on, I'll show you where it is. I said, no, you're not showing me where it is. So I called 911 and our fire department showed up a few minutes later and caught the thing. They, they promised to bring it to the meeting tonight. I said, I don't think that's necessary. But, you know, we don't think much about what we can do with our public safety people. But they, they just service us all the time doing just whatever we ask them to do. And I want to, I want to thank fire department and thank Freddie and his crew out at Station Two. Thank you.
Excellent. We got an awesome fire department and a police department. So this past Monday, yesterday, they actually partnered with the Greater Florence Women's Club and, you know, building on those services that we offer, they offered these kits available that would have fingerprinting, DNA, a photo, voice recognition. None of this was saved in their system. So it's completely safe. And you walk away with a DVD and actual paper copies in an envelope that if something ever happens to your child or your grandparent, because this was open for people of all ages, you could hand that over to the authorities and they would be able to utilize that to, you know, put out notification of helping to find or in the event, identify a loved one. So great service. We had our Florence K-8 Student Council out there as well, volunteering, helping people. Fire department was there handing out the vial of life. When we're talking about services that we have for our citizens that sometimes they're not aware of, this is just something that goes on the side of your refrigerator. It lists, you know, any ailments you have, what medications you're taking, who are your caregivers in regards to physicians. So this way, if something happens, it can just go with you and that information is there. They also have an online version available that I didn't know. On the line also, I had a conversation with a few members there and they said, you know, we need to do something to get the word out more in regards to the van rides that we have available. Because we have the grant program, we have a van, we have volunteers that operate this. And if there's a citizen that needs a ride to go to a doctor's appointment or anything of that nature, we have that service in our town. That's a great service. Some people, they don't know about it. So I said that I would share that feedback and we'll continue to try to promote it, as well as our angel alerts, which is my understanding similar to I've fallen and I can't get up. But it's a free service that we provide through grants. Is, am I correct, Chief Strayer? PD runs that. PD, can you come up and just share a few words? Because I said that I would, I would reach out and get that PSA out there. And I just want to be able to make sure everybody has that information. Perhaps we can also put little links on our site as well.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And yes, it's run through our VIPS program. And basically our volunteers will go out and check on those individuals and provide care and those kinds of things. So if anybody wants to be a part of that, I mean, go and contact the PD and we'll go and get them set up.
All right. Thank you so much. So we talked about the women's club. I only have a few more minor things. We are working with Parks and Rec. There's a few citizens that came forward. And if you have a service, something that you want to offer to the community that we don't already offer, bring it to us. We are always open. We want to hear your ideas and be able to turn them into a reality. So that way we can continue to build that community. What I'm speaking to specifically is some art classes that we're looking at bringing into the community center and growing that department there. We are going to, in a future meeting, be discussing our boards and commissions. At our work session this past Monday, we had talked about redesigning some of our boards and commissions as well as growing some of them. So that's going to be coming up on our next agenda. And last but not least, I don't know if anybody's heard about the HGTV contest, but I wanted to make council aware that we have some citizens in our community that want to help and lead this effort. And we're going to be reaching out strategically to some businesses, business owners, as well as a homeowner to see if they would like to be featured. So we can put it out there to see if we could win our main street revitalization on HGTV. So if you, yes?
Did you get clarification on that? If they actually pay all the money or if we're expected to pay money on that?
I'll fill you in after.
Because Ben and I had had this conversation.
He told me. No, we did. We, we had that conversation and I don't want to violate a meeting law, so I'll fill you in after. All right, that is all I have this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we have another executive session, but we will come out and adjourn once again. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Second.
Wow, enthused. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.